The legislature is back from recess. Last night, before we ended, Senator Morrison had an inquiry to both the author and of the amendment and yielded to both Senator Rispicio and Vice Speaker, and we left off with Senator Rispicio. So I’m going to go ahead and, at this time, call Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, where we left off, also, the Vice Speaker brought up some very valid points regarding the use of the hot bonds, and he is offering amendment that’s on the floor, that’s before us, that says that this project, or this contained in Bill 32-33 as amended, cannot go forward unless certain requirements are met, and particularly was the Fujita Pump Station is in operation for at least 60 days. I rose to state that I certainly agree with that, and I have that same concern, and I think none of us, although the GIDE Administrator said that these monies would not jeopardize any of the other hot bond projects pursuant to that public law, I said that I think, in the interest of trying to address these concerns, I would be amenable to deleting the requirement or the provision that these monies come from the hot bond. And so I have an amendment, but I would ask if the Vice Speaker is willing to maybe withdraw his amendment, and depending on how my amendment moves, he can always move his amendment again if he’s not satisfied with what I’m offering as something that will address the issue of use of the hot bonds.
Everybody has the amendment. Vice Speaker, would you like to yield based on that?
Do I get burned twice? I agreed to withdraw my last amendment, and it went down in flames. If there is an understanding that I will be able to reintroduce my amendment, I will withdraw it. But if there is no understanding and commitment that I’m going to be allowed to bring it back...
Yeah, I guess when the Vice Speaker withdrew his other amendment because another senator was trying to amend the amendment, there was really no commitment that that amendment was going to pass, or no presumption that it was going to pass. And I’m asking if the, for the interest of moving my amendment forward, I’m asking if the Vice Speaker will withdraw his amendment, and I said if he’s not satisfied with the outcome of the amendment I’m going to move, then he can always try to move his amendment again. Or we can dispose of his amendment, and I can move my amendment. It doesn’t matter to me, but in the interest of addressing a very valid point that he raised, I think I have a language that will address that.
Otherwise, I would be out of order.
Yes. Vice Speaker, I’ll go ahead and recognize you.
I just hope that there’s enough collegiality here that it’s understood, because if there’s one objection to my bringing it back up...
I understand.
...judging from what happened yesterday, I’m not going to be able to get enough to get it back on. So...
Thank you, Vice Speaker. I’m going to take a brief recess. The legislature is back from recess. Thank you. Vice Speaker, I’ll go ahead and recognize you at this time.
Madam Speaker, in the interest of moving this along, I will withdraw my amendment with the understanding that if I’m not satisfied with this proposal that’s being proffered by the good Majority Leader, that I will have an opportunity to bring mine back up, and it will not be, there will be no motion to object to it and not at least have a discussion on it. Thank you.
Yes. On that motion without objection, motion carries. Majority Leader, you’re recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and if there is an objection to the Vice Speaker bringing his amendment up, I will move his amendment myself, so we get two chances to bring it to the floor. But I want to again say that this bill is being done in collaboration with the governor and the governor’s office, and when we broke yesterday, the Vice Speaker raised a very good point regarding the use of the hot bonds for the demolition of the DOA building, the Manuel Guerrero Administration Building, whereas there might be some issues with the current hot bond projects. And again, although the GIDE Administrator said that there’s sufficient funds to cover this particular project without jeopardizing any of the ongoing projects, we already know that with the Fujita Pump Station, there are some concerns with the initial plans that GIDE has rolled out to mitigate that area, and some environmental concerns that have already arisen. And whatever the case may be resulting those plans, we could see that more money will be required. There’s also more monies that are already going to be required for the operations of the Guam Museum. So I’m pleased to report that the governor and the governor’s office is certainly okay with removing any references to the hot bonds. So I offer as Section 4 to delete the words “utilize any and all excess funds as needed from previous hot bond projects identified in public law 30-228,” and in order to give the governor the flexibility to find funds to carry out this project, I’m adding the words “transfer funds from within,” which is already there, “transfer funds from within the governor’s transfer authority for the demolition of the Manuel F.L. Guerrero Administration Building,” and then I’m adding a new sentence, “utilize any available funds from excess revenues,” and another new sentence, “utilize any appropriations made to the executive branch.” And so the funds identified in items A, B, and C of this section shall be utilized for landscaping, planting of grass, trees, ground lighting, above-ground lighting, walkways, sidewalks, park benches, and other park amenities to ensure that this site remains open to the public and for the development and construction of a commemorative monument within the demolition site. And certainly, Madam Speaker, if this amendment passes, then I would also follow through and make another motion to delete all of Section 3 of the bill, which references the addition of this project to the hot bond, and then to renumber the sections accordingly. And so I’m offering this language, recognizing the Vice Speaker’s concerns and expressing full agreement that we should just take the hot bond proceeds off the table, because we don’t want to even jeopardize any of those ongoing projects. And so I offer this as a floor amendment.
Thank you. Majority Leader, anyone? Senator Morrison, you’re recognized on the Rory Rispicio amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I believe this amendment is, respect to also addressing my inquiry and concern that this may be impacting the obligations that are outstanding with regards to the hot bond projects. I was concerned, Madam Speaker, because the fact that we know that, we know we have a Guam museum, and we know from short past that one of the big reasons why we moved the museum down to the Skinner Plaza area was to free up funding as well, so that we can also ensure that those other projects that are part of this whole hot bond project is our address. And we all know that these, as small as they are out there, these projects, they complement the museum. And, you know, we just don’t want to potentially jeopardize these projects that are still outstanding. And, you know, we just don’t want to walk into a Guam museum and look at these photos of what this area of Guam looks like. It’s beautiful, it’s nice, it has a history, has all the things that go with it, and then as a visitor or someone that goes out to take a look at these areas firsthand, that these actual areas don’t reflect what they’re seeing in the Guam museum. So I’m glad the author of this, the mover of this amendment is making an effort to address not impacting those hot bond projects that are currently outstanding. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
You’re welcome. Senator Morrison, anyone else? Senator Mike Siniklas, you’re recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate the amendment as an attempt to try and reconcile the concerns expressed by members of the body. I do have some items on the amendment that kind of jump out at me. The first item is that this section and throughout the bill, there is no amount that kind of sets a limit on how much this demolition and landscaping, planting of grass, shrubs, trees, ground lighting, above-ground lighting, walkways, sidewalks, park benches, and other park amenities are projected to cost. Without a ceiling, we can theoretically expend an unlimited amount of money for this demolition and for the planting and for the building of the sidewalks, park benches, and other park amenities. And so I think it’s important for us to just make sure that we’re looking out for the people’s interest and not authorizing a pie-in-the-sky project that can cost, you know, an amount of money that’s basically, you know, up in the air. I think it’s important for us to try and put that ceiling there so that we’re not going to be authorizing an unlimited amount of transfer or the utilization of an unlimited amount of available funds, or the utilization of an unlimited amount of the appropriations to the executive branch specifically for this project. So I guess I would first like to defer to the author of the amendment. If there is an amount that he believes he may be comfortable with us putting into the amendment to create the ceiling that I’m talking about, and if not, then I can probably try and come up with a figure myself. But I’ll go ahead and yield at this time, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Siniklas. Majority Leader, would you like to yield?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I’ll yield, and thank you, Senator Siniklas. I do agree that we should move toward capping the expenditure. GIDE did say that it was going to cost $600,000 to demolish that building, and given that I’m adding the additional requirements of landscaping and lighting and ground lighting, and more importantly, the commemorative monument, I’m open to any consensus that we can generate to provide a cap. So we just don’t have the, which I don’t think there will be, but if it would assuage this body that there be a cap, then certainly I’m supportive of it.
Senator Siniklas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I’m going to go with an amount that, you know, I’m open to anybody discussing it, but we’re looking at $600,000, a rough estimate for demolition. We’re looking at building a monument on the site and doing some landscaping and everything else, and we want to make sure that we do it right. So $600,000, maybe with an additional 400 to make it even $1 million as a ceiling, I think would be something that we can probably start discussing at the very least. So as an amendment to the amendment, Madam Speaker, after the word “authorized,” I would like to add the language “an amount up to $1 million.” The governor of Guam has hereby authorized an amount up to $1 million.
On that motion, the amendment to the Rispicio amendment, anyone wishing to speak? Okay. Senator, Senator Tommy? I’m going to go ahead and recognize you on Senator Mike Siniklas’ amendment to Rispicio’s amendment that would bring it up, that would put an amount of no more than, up to $1 million.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I thank the previous speaker for trying to work within a limited constraint that he is right, that this doesn’t provide for an open-ended cost. We’ve seen change orders taking place at many, some of our projects out there, but I think it would be best, Madam Speaker, maybe if the author would ensure, maybe with a phone call, what would be, I know $600,000 was identified, but we are addressing some other items here, so it makes sense to ensure that if $1 million is the number, then so be it. But I just don’t want to be guessing that $1 million would suffice to cover the amount for this project.
Thank you, Senator Morrison. I’m going to go ahead and address Assistant Majority Leader, Senator Adda. Senator Underwood, did you want to also speak? And then Senator Underwood afterwards on Senator Mike Siniklas’ amendment to the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And so now it seems that, you know, we’re starting to narrow down this amendment. The original amendment is to give the governor the authorization to transfer funds from wherever he can find it. And then the amendment to the amendment is now to put a cap on how much funds can be transferred for this particular activity. The concern that I have, though, is that, you know, how do we ensure that these funds are not transferred from the agencies that are charged with the responsibility for providing education, health care, and public safety? So who are the cash cows? You know, we got DOE, we’ve got GPD, we got Guam Fire Department, and we’ve got, you know, Guam Memorial Hospital and Public Health. So, you know, that’s going to leave then, if, so if we put a picket fence around those agencies, then it really leaves the governor with no other choice but to look at, you know, agencies such as, you know, the Guam Preservation Trust, CAHA, and all those other agencies who do not provide the, you know, health, education, and public safety services. So I don’t know whether that amendment, the cap, needs to be taken, disposed of first, and then we can come in and amend the amended amendment. But I certainly would have concerns about just, you know, I mean, it’s, to just give the authority generally is just as concerning as not putting a cap on it. So, okay, so I don’t know, procedurally, I guess, do we need to take, dispose of the amendment to the amendment before we can make a second amendment?
Yes, yes, Senator Adda. We would have to dispose of Senator Mike Siniklas’ amendment to the amendment, but I do have two other senators who would like to speak. It would be the Senator Underwood and then Vice Speaker Cruz. So I’ll go ahead and entertain Senator Underwood at this time.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I, first of all, I want to thank the previous speaker for noting that if we are to allow transfer, that we have to ensure that it’s not going to be taken out of education, public safety, and also health. But, you know, when we start talking about numbers and we start identifying the amount or the cap, I want to go back to the previous estimate that had been provided by, as I understand it was GIDE, that said it would cost $600,000 to demolish that building. That’s a large amount of money, $600,000. So I want to ask the author of the bill whether there is a certification on that estimate, because we can’t just be throwing numbers around, and my understanding of the estimate for what it would cost to renovate it was just based on a text message that was going to be 17 to 25 million to renovate the building. So I would like to get clarification on the certification of that estimate of $600,000 to demolish the building.
I’m going to ask Majority Leader if he’d like to answer that question.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I thank the senator from Tunon for the questions, and I’ll yield. The $600,000 amount came from the GIDE Administrator at a public hearing, so that, absent any certification in terms of whether they actually went out and determined this cost estimate, I wouldn’t second-guess GIDE or the GIDE Administrator, because this is a number that they provided to the legislature, specifically to my committee. And so I appreciate the mover of the amendment to my amendment to say, well, we have to account for the monies needed for the additional stuff that we’re requiring in this amended bill. So I think the number that was proposed is sufficient, and it says up to. So if any of those, if that number is not expended fully, then they won’t spend that money, obviously. And I think we’re just going to have to go with what the administration told us, that it was going to cost anywhere around $600,000 for the actual demolition, and I’m going to have to take that for whatever it’s worth.
Sijos Massey, Majority Leader. Senator Underwood, you still have the floor. Does that answer your inquiry? Thank you, Senator Underwood. Vice Speaker Cruz, you’re recognized.
Though I don’t cherish thought, nor do I cherish the thought of having to chair it, I think the question that was posed by the good senator from Mingila about procedurally where we’re at, that this is an appropriation, and therefore we probably should get testimony on the record in a committee of the whole to determine how much this is going to cost us.
I’ll go ahead and accept your point of order, Majority Leader.
Point of order, Madam Speaker. Again, I appreciate that procedural move, right? But however, what the amendment to the amendment is, is no different from the general language that I’m proposing. Actually, the amendment to the amendment narrowly defines that this amount can be spent up to $1 million and can’t go any further. So, I mean, if there was a desire to review this as an appropriation, then that should have been done at the very beginning of this bill and not in the middle or towards the end of it.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I’m going to entertain Senator Mike Siniklas’ amendment to the amendment. Are there anyone else wishing to speak on that? If not, Senator Siniklas, you’d like to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And, you know, I really appreciate the comments from my colleagues. Again, and I will fully disclose, this $1 million is really just a general idea based on some general statements, and if we can get concrete numbers, not only on what a proper cap would be, but again, going back to the comparison between demolition and renovation, I mean, there’s just a lot of numbers that we could actually be reconciling here that would allow us to make a more informed decision with respect to how we’re going to go about spending the people’s money on this project. For me, the reason why I’m proffering this amendment is because absent any other alternative, I just don’t want to leave the entire question open-ended. I think that that is the worst-case scenario for me to have to reconcile. And so at the very least, you know, factoring in the anecdotal stuff that was shared with us as to how much this will cost to demolish $600,000, to do these area improvements, plus to build the monument, maybe another $400,000, again, those are all just very, very general assumptions and estimates, but I find that to be safer to rely on than leaving the whole question open-ended altogether. So that’s the whole reason why I’m moving this amendment, Madam Speaker, but it’s in no way to discount the idea that perhaps a committee of the whole would be appropriate, nor is it in any way intended to discount the idea that hard and fast figures that can be certified by professionals or that can be reflected in an actual plan would be more preferred, because for me, they would be. But absent any of that, this is, for me, the next best choice. And so I’d like to, in that environment, this current environment, just move that amendment forward as it stands.
Thank you, Senator Siniklas. So on the motion, are there any objections? No objections? Motion carries. Senator Siniklas, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, there are just a few more, there’s one more open-ended area here in the amendment that I would like to try and tighten up, and that is on the second...
Senator Siniklas, if I may, I’m just going to go ahead and ask you if you can make sure that you get that amendment to the clerk. Thank you. You can proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On the second to the last line, as we go through the list of the different projects that are authorized after the demolition, which includes landscaping, planting of grass, shrubs, trees, ground lighting, above-ground lighting, walkways, sidewalks, park benches, and other park amenities, it’s that last statement there, the “and other park amenities,” that I find to be a little too open-ended with respect to the intent of the bill, which is strictly to demolish and clean up and make appropriate the site. If we look through the bill, on page four of the bill, starting on line 17 in Section 3, subsection item 5, it limits the, it limits the addition to hot bond law that Section 3 were to include, and it only says landscaping, lighting, walkways, planting of grass, shrubs, and trees. But here in this amendment, it includes a couple other items to “and the last statement and other park amenities,” which is consistent with Section 4 of the bill on page 5. And it’s that statement and other park amenities that, again, is a little open-ended, Madam Speaker, because then, you know, it’s possible that we may demolish the building for, you know, $300,000, we may do the landscaping and everything else for another $200,000, and then we have another $500,000 for the monument and other park amenities. And, you know, are we going to spend $400,000 on the amenities and $100,000 on the monument? I mean, how is that all going to break down? You know, we really don’t know how that’s all going to break down. And so I would prefer that we have the money specifically go to what we’ve identified, which is the landscaping, the planting of grass, shrubs, trees, ground lighting, above-ground lighting, walkways, sidewalks, and park benches, and then just strike the “and other park amenities.” So just, my amendment that I’d like to proffer is after the word sidewalks, just add the word “and,” and then a period after the word “benches.” Oh, I’m sorry. Yeah, I’m sorry. No period after “benches.” Just strike “and other park amenities,” so say “walkways, sidewalks, and park benches” to ensure that this site remains open to the public.
On that amendment, I’m going to recognize Vice Speaker Cruz and then Senator Morrison.
Madam Speaker, my last comment was not just rhetorical. I really wanted to put it on the record that we need to have a record, and I’m concerned about the speed at which we’re moving. Six months after November the 21st, we are still eating it for an action that we took here without doing due diligence. This last question of removing other park amenities, we have a former director of parks and recreation here. I would bet that one of the park amenities that is necessary for something that size would be public bathrooms. How much that’s going to cost? I don’t know. I’m just saying we are moving so fast, we’re not having them come in and describe how much these things are going to cost. I just wanted on the record that it’s clear... I just wanted on the record that it's clear that I did stand up. My suggestion that we go to committee of the whole because it was appropriation was ignored, but I will call our attention to Chapter 9, Fiscal Accountability Act of 1999, on restrictions for unfunded appropriations. I'd read it, but it doesn't matter. Continue.
Senator Morrison, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I'm concerned if we're striking out other park amenities. I think maybe the author was trying to attempt to ensure, we know we have surrounding or adjacent, surrounding park areas that are adjacent that, again, complement what we're trying to do as, in a sense, trying to make it a more pleasing site. And I think maybe the author could maybe, before we just look to striking this out, ensure that, that maybe that this language was proper to ensure that we also, with the Palacio and the plaza and the area surrounding it, those are other park areas that may need these amenities, that we don't limit it to ready to this, to this area over the Manuel Building. Or it makes the case to really define the jurisdictions of how far that we can actually expand with the Manuel Building. So maybe the author can clarify that, because I think that it's important to keep in the park amenities, knowing that the area surroundings may need support. We know there's a, one of the big reasons, Madam Speaker, I know we're pursuing this, is we know FestPAC's right around the corner. That's going to be the heart of the activity, the event. And I, we're going to have 10,000 people here, 10,000 people from the South Pacific. And I think the park amenities surrounding this area is going to need support. So although I know we're focusing on the building itself, I think these park amenities surrounding the area are going to need support. So unless the author clarifies what the park amenities would be, I'll wait for that. But I think it's clear that we, I object to this area because knowing that may be support there. They may be needing some support in that area. Unless we can narrow and define the language to be more surround, the surrounding areas of the Manuel Building.
Senator Morrison, would you like it from Senator Snicholas or the author of the legislation?
I think the author can clarify-
Okay, I will go ahead and address. Would you like to answer his question, Majority Leader?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll yield, and I thank the Senator for the question. Section 4 is actually my amendment. It's an amendment that I put into the original bill, simply because I didn't want to do these things incrementally, where there would be an act to authorize the demolition of the building, and then wait till another act, either through the legislature or through other means, to begin to have that available as a usable open space. That was, that was something I told members of this body, and that was something that I expressed at the last public hearing that we had, that I just don't want two years from now, or down the road from now, to see that that area is going to have overgrown grass and going to be, you know, just not a usable open space. So I just started listing things that would, that I would find in a park. But more importantly, the use of "and other park amenities" could also include public restrooms or whatever means necessary to make that a usable open space. They don't have to do a restroom, but I think the fact that we just adopted the last amendment where it's capped at $1 million, this is the most that they'll would be able to spend. So if there's a, if the reason for this amendment is because it still seems to be open-ended, the fact that this thing is now capped would, I think, would address that concern. But I wanted, I didn't, I mean, there's, I didn't want to not provide for the flexibility for this to be a truly a usable open space. And as the previous speaker pointed out, there are other parks in the surrounding area, and so I, that's what I have to offer. This is my amendment, and this is the reason why the words "and other park amenities" was included.
Sijos Massey, Majority Leader. Senator Morrison, does that answer your inquiry?
Yes, Madam Speaker. So, Madam Speaker, I object to the amendment, given the fact that there was a previous amendment to cap it at $1 million. So we know that that's the amount they will work with. I just want to ensure that the other adjacent park amenities or surrounding parks will get the support. Again, this will complement the area. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sijos Massey, anyone else on the amendment? Senator Tom Attah, Assistant Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I think the earlier speaker who raised the issue about, you know, the other park amenities to include, for example, public restrooms, is really an important point. And if we really take a look at, you know, right now, down there, there is no restroom. So what are we going to do? I mean, we're going to knock it down, we're going, the building's going to be demolished, and we're going to try and make it at least a space that's suitable for families to come down and, you know, spend the day. I mean, gosh, if you want a safe day at the park, the best place is one that's right across from the police station. So, you know, if we're basically going to create this open space, which I think is very important in our, you know, hectic day-to-day lives, for families and visitors to come down and just spend a leisurely day, you know, at some point, these people are going to need to use the bathroom. So they're either going to run over to Addis Plaza and try and get into the bathroom there, which are normally locked, they're going to go to the cathedral when the legislature is open, they're going to go there, they're going to go to the museum. So we really need to, I think, start considering, you know, having a restroom facility or facilities available. I mean, you got the Santos, Angel Santos Park over there also. So if, if some are somewhat uncomfortable about the general language of law, park, other park amenities, then, you know, then, then really, we should maybe then give more specificity to it and, and, and make sure that we put language in there that, you know, along with that park, you've got to have public restrooms. But I think a greater concern that I have is, we're going to pump in, you know, a million dollars, and we're really, that's just kind of like, where'd you get that? Well, there, that's where I got it. And so I'm concerned that we're going to demolish the building and maybe make it suitable enough for, for people to come down and, and, you know, spend the day in the park, but then we don't have these other park amenities available. And so the suggestion that was made earlier about, you know, maybe we should just kind of slow down a little bit here, and let's sit down and, gosh, if nothing else, I mean, so we don't want to spend $17 million to renovate the building, you know, then if we're going to put something in its place, like an open space, then at least let's give it some thought so that we don't end up with just basically a concrete slab there because we, we exhausted the million dollars for, for, for the demolition. I mean, we, nobody in here's got a clue, other than, than that, you know, we got from the administration that it's going to cost $600,000 to demolish the building. So I'm really kind of concerned that, I mean, you know, that we're just, man, we're, we're going, we're going breakneck speed down and into the dark here. We don't know which end of that tunnel we're going to come out of. And, you know, we, if we're going to spend a million bucks, maybe it's one of those sort of things for maybe an additional half a million dollars, if we really had something clear in mind, would, you know, would be that, that additional funding that will really make what we end up with over there, this open space, really worthwhile, because let's face it, you know, the additional construction that's going to take place over there, it's going to take a while. And so in the interim, at least we will have some space and, you know, not some, you know, an alter, an alternative, you know, sore spot that's, that's sitting, that's sitting there. So I, you know, I, I know that, I guess, it's already been objected to about, you know, just stepping back a little bit. Let's sit down and, you know, maybe, I'm sure, I'm sure the, the members of the Preservation Trust have kind of given some thought. There's been probably a lot more thought giving in, given to this, as to really what we should have there. And maybe I would like to hear from them. Now, you know, insofar as, is it going to take a million? Is it going to take a million and a half? Well, you know, I mean, short of being really precise about how much it's going to cost, I think that, you know, your architects can, with some degree of accuracy, put that thing in the ballpark as to how much, you know, we would really need. But, you know, we just kind of really picked the million dollars out of the air, and not sure if that's going to get us close to where we want to get to. So I just, I just want to raise that, you know, I just want to raise that concern and the fact that if we're not, if we're not, if we're concerned about the general, generalness of the language and other park amenities, then, my gosh, then let's, let's change that and, and, and put in there public restrooms. Thank you.
Sijos Massey, Senator Attah, anyone else on the motion on the amendment? Senator Snicholas, you can close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd just like to clarify something for the record, just in case there might be any confusion. I am not trying to accelerate this process at all. I'm, I'm dealing with an amendment that's been proffered with respect to the bill, and I'm dealing with areas that I think are kind of open-ended here that I would like to tighten up in order for me to be comfortable with the overall, overall language of the bill in the event that it were to pass. I view my role as a policymaker here to, in the event that a bill passes, at least do everything that I can to include something in there that would, at some point or another, address some of the concerns that I have. But I want this to be very, very clear, Madam Speaker. I agree with everything that the retiring speaker said in terms of us having to get firmer numbers, in terms of us slowing this process down and perhaps getting a greater understanding of what the details are going to entail, to include more specifically and more importantly to me, how much this is going to cost. Again, you know, the question is, how much is the demolition versus the renovation going to cost in comparison? How much is other park amenities going to cost? I mean, it was mentioned by one of the retiring speakers that it would be good to factor in the needs of other parks within the vicinity. How much is that going to require? You know, we don't have any of those numbers in any of these things that we're discussing, Madam Speaker. And it makes for a very, very difficult bill for me to support overall, because there's just way too many question marks. But absent getting the answers that I would like, I still would like to try and incorporate areas within the bill that would put some kind of checks and balances into it. One of them was capping the amount at $1 million, and yes, that amount is really not even an estimate, it's an assumption. But it's better than having a completely open-ended spending authority. So that's where the million came from. Is that adequate? Is it enough? I don't know. I think it's a great question to ask and a great question to answer. And I think we really should, as, as the Vice Speaker mentioned, we really should get the answer to those questions. But in the event that we don't, I would prefer that we have some kind of a cap in place versus none at all. And with respect to keeping the other park amenities open-ended, I would prefer that we don't have anything open-ended, and we try and close up these open ends as much as possible. However, I mean, it's very clear, we all know the area very well, Madam Speaker, there is no real restroom facility in that place. I mean, technically, there's none now. It's not like we can just walk into the abandoned building or the vacated building and go use that restroom there either. So really, no restroom now, no restroom later, there's no bathroom. Should we put one? Yes. But now, I really feel that that conversation is deviating away from the true intent of the bill. The true intent of the bill is to demolish the building. If we're going to talk about putting a restroom up, then we're starting to talk about phase two, which is, what are we going to put up thereafter? And if we're going to start talking about that, then we're getting all the way back full circle into the question of, what's the overall plan of the area? How much is that overall plan going to cost? What are going to be the specifications of that plan, and how is it going to meet not only the needs of the community with respect to a restroom, but the revitalization objectives of the overall Hagat and Ya Master Plan? I mean, that's, that, that is kind of where I'm seeing this in terms of two separate issues. If we're talking strictly about demolition, which is what this bill is supposed to be primarily about, then focusing on other park amenities, like building a restroom, is kind of going beyond the scope of that. But if we're going to focus on that, which we will have to either now or later, then we need, we really need to reconsider the question of whether or not the entire issue of demolition is premature. Because maybe we shouldn't demolish the whole building, maybe we should have them demolish everything around the bathroom and then just renovate the bathroom. I mean, that's another possibility. Okay? So I think that there's a lot of questions here, Madam Speaker, that are really coming up with respect to what are we going to do after demolition? If we're going to be building other park amenities, then maybe, then maybe we need to, we need to step back and ask the question about the master plan. So I guess at this time, I'll yield to the wisdom of my colleagues who want to keep that language in there, but again, that's kind of taking us beyond the scope of demolition and into the idea of what we're building or erecting after, after the building comes down. So I'll go ahead and withdraw my amendment, Madam Speaker, but I do so echoing the sentiments that maybe a committee of the whole is appropriate, maybe a referral back to committee is appropriate, but definitely more answers is absolutely appropriate. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On that motion to withdraw Senator Mike Snicholas' amendment, there are any objections? No objections? So we're still on the Rory Respechel amendment. Are there anyone else wishing to speak? Senator Tom Attah, you're recognized. On the main amendment by Majority Leader.
I, I thought it was amended, I thought the main amendment was amended.
Right.
Right. So the amended amendment.
He withdrew, so we're back to the main amendment?
What happened to the amendment that put a cap of $1 million? Okay.
That's, that went through.
Yeah, so we're talking about the amended amendment.
No, and then he went from that to deleting the park benches on that. And then that was withdrawn, so he said, "Thank you." So we're still on the-
So we're discussing the amendment as amended?
As authored, yes, as amended, as authored by Senator Respechel.
All right.
There's one amendment that passed.
Correct. So, Madam Speaker, I, the concern that I have now then is that we're giving this authority to the governor to transfer funds from wherever he can find it, and, you know, some specific suggestions were given as to transferring it from, I guess, basically from the budget anywhere there, or where if he can find any excess revenues, or from wherever. But wherever he finds it, I, I would be concerned that we're not taking funds away from agencies that are, have the responsibility for providing health, education, and public safety in our community. So I would like to proffer the amendment that would read, "However," comma, "funds shall not be transferred from agencies which directly provide education, public, health, education, and public safety services."
At the bottom?
I'm sorry?
Where did you want to insert that?
I guess at the end.
At the end, right?
Correct.
After site?
Yeah, that'd be fine. So it just basically then-
A new sentence. A new sentence. After the period?
Correct, yes, yes.
Yes.
Be a new sentence, yeah, after the, after the word "site" there.
Okay. Did everybody understand that?
It would read, "However," comma, "funds shall not be transferred from agencies which directly provide education, health, education, and public safety services."
On that amendment to the amendment, the Tom Attah amendment to the amendment, are there anyone wishing to speak? If not, Jim, yes, you're, you're, I will acknowledge you, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I understand the concerns, I really, really do. And even I understand the, the underlying intent and motive for, that this amendment to the amendment is being proffered, and that's to ensure that the funds are not transferred from- and that's to ensure that the funds are not transferred from agencies that provide health, education, and public safety services. And again, when you start thinking along those three areas, health, you, you think about public health, of course, and you talk about the hospital. And when you talk about education, of course, we're talking about Department of Education, eh, for the most part, is what, what comes to mind. Public safety, of course, everybody thinks about the police department and the fire department, and then we figure, okay, as long as it's not transferred from those agencies, we're okay. However, with this kind of language, and if we really want to acknowledge the real role of the other agencies that I did not mention, right? Take, for example, Customs and Quarantine. The argument can be made that that is definitely an agency that provides public safety and public health, uh, services. When you start taking a look at Envart, the Department of, of, uh, Agriculture, right, we, uh, we could talk about how it relates, their services relate again to the public safety and the health. Eh, eh, and again, all the agencies have a certain role, even Parks and Rec in terms of health and education and public safety. Their mission also ties in into that, this formula of health, education, and public safety. We talk about even the inspectors who are looking for invasive species, that's an issue that, again, addresses the health of this island, the education even, and the public safety of this island. So it's such a broad scope that's being proffered that I think, for the most part, there is no agency that you could not relate back to these three generalized areas of health, education, and public safety services. Um, and so I caution us, uh, and like I said, I understand the intent and I understand the purpose of trying to get this in, but with this language being as broaded as it is, the argument can be made that then no money will be expended whatsoever, or can be transferred by the governor, right, to, to accomplish this purpose. So I caution us on that one. I don't know where I stand, but because it's so overly broad, I would have to, at least in my mind, come to the conclusion that this will not allow the governor to transfer any money whatsoever from anywhere. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Underwood, Senator, uh, Senator Espaldon. Senator Underwood, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I stand in full support of the amendment, uh, that is being proffered to, to exclude, uh, education, uh, public safety, and health, uh, agencies, uh, related to those three areas, because those really are the, the agencies that protect our most vulnerable and, uh, provide the necessary, um, they're, the lifeline agencies. So, uh, Madam Speaker, you know, what all of this is, is, uh, pointing to is, again, the lack of planning, appropriate planning for, that, that underlies this bill as a whole. When we have to stand here and start, uh, making amendments upon amendments to ensure that, um, when we appropriate funds-
Point of order and a point of personal privilege, Madam Speaker. I want to remind the current speaker that when she had her first bill, we spent about a week and a half amending almost every single word of that bill. I just can't sit here and be talked about how this is premature again, how there's no planning. Read the entire bill, you see that there's a plan, there's something that, that is being presented to this body so we can move forward, and please don't say that the bill is not ready. We, we just, as a courtesy to our freshman senator, we spent a very long time on her very first bill, all right? So I rise to that point of personal privilege, and I thank you for recognizing that.
So noted, Majority Leader. Thank you. Senator Underwood, you may proceed.
And Madam Speaker, I really want to express my deepest appreciation for all the assistance that had been provided to me as a freshman, uh, senator, my first bill. I really appreciated all of the help that was provided to me. But I want to go back again to the sense of frustration. This is not to criticize the author of the bill, but again, it's just to bring to our attention, at least from my point of view, the sense of uneasiness that we, we have because we, I feel that there really, if, if there's a plan, if there's a plan that had been provided, then even if there are those numbers, the estimates, I, I am not comfortable with those numbers because there, no, there, there isn't a certification from the professionals. So all I am saying is that in reference to the amendment, um, that's being proffered, the most recent amendment where we protect education, health, and public safety, that those agencies, I am in full support of that, and as we move along and as I make that statement, I just also want to qualify the fact that my input by no means, um, personally criticize the hard work and the legitimacy of the author of the bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sejuas Massey, Senator Underwood. Vice Speaker Cruz on the Tom Adda amendment to the amendment. You're recognized, Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as the Chairman of Appropriations, I think it is incumbent upon me to actually read the first part of the Fiscal Accountability Act of 1999 into the record. All bills that have an effect upon the revenues of the appropri- uh, of the expenditure of any funds of government at Guam shall identify a specific funding source for which funds are in fact available, and any bill for which a fiscal note indicates that no funds or insufficient funds are available shall not be reported out of the standing committee for legislative session unless one or a combination of the following are met. One, the bill identifies a specific alternate funding source for which funds are available and for which a fiscal note has been prepared which indicates that funds are available. Two, de-appropriates from a previous appropriation from which funds are available and for which a fiscal note has been prepared which indicates that funds are available. Or, three, a written certification is provided by the chairperson of the standing committee that this situation exists which threatens safety, health, and welfare of the community. I need not remind us about the criticism we are currently suffering for another bill that we did. Please, I'm just reading this into the record so it's not said that the Chairman of Appropriations did not advise the body of our responsibility.
Sejuas Massey, Vice Speaker. Uh, we're still on the Senator Adda amendment to the amendment. Uh, are there anyone else wishing to speak on that? If not, uh, Senator Espaldon?
Madam Speaker, if I may, thank you, and I know I've spoken already, but in light of what, uh, the good Vice Speaker reminded us of what is in statute, it would seem appropriate that if we were to identify any specific funding source to be able to move this forward-
Senator, Senator Espaldon, at this time from the chair, I will finish the amendment and, and continue, and then I will ask for a brief recess, but I want to make sure that I dispose of this, Senator Espaldon. So I'm gonna, I already had you speak, sir, so I'm gonna go ahead and just want to dispose this, and then, uh, and then I, from the chair, will take a brief moment to speak to the author, so please.
Then a point, point of order then, uh, Madam, Madam Speaker, is that to get through this amendment, I think it might behoove us to at least entertain the thought of going into the committee of whole so we can identify any funding sources. It might be appropriate.
Senator Espaldon, so noted. Thank you very much. On, on the Senator Tom Amen- uh, Tom Adda amendment, uh, if there's no other folks wishing to speak, Senator Adda, you can close.
Uh, Madam Speaker, you know, I, I think the retiring speaker certainly raised, uh, a valid point about, you know, just about any agency out there, you could make the argument that they in fact provide health, education, and public safety services. Um, maybe, maybe then, again, we can provide more specificity and instead of saying, "We'll directly provide education, public safety, and education services," uh, to, to more specifically then identify the agencies that, that are to be basically, uh, you know, put a picket fence around so that they don't go, uh, trap, funds are not being transferred. And so those agencies would be the Guam Department of Education, UOG, GCC, uh, GMH, uh, Department of Public Health, uh, Guam Police Department, and Guam Fire Department.
Senator Adda, you're gonna go ahead and add to the amendment as, as a closure on that? I'm gonna go ahead and take a brief recess so that you can make sure that you add that in.[1234.65] I'm sorry, this legislature is back from recess. I do know that amendment was being proffered, but at this time, I'm going to go ahead and address the Majority Leader, Senator, if I may--
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and colleagues. I move that notwithstanding the House rules that we suspend discussion on this particular amendment, and that we resolve into the committee of hold for purposes of Bill Number 32-33 as amended with all of the amendments made so far, and that we also satisfy the issue raised by our Vice Speaker in Appropriations Chair, and that we recess until 1:00 p.m. At that time, we would have a complement of individuals that will be available to answer any of the concerns that our colleagues have on this bill. So I make that notwithstanding--
And that you would call in all the agency heads' responsibility, including GPT. Okay. On that motion, without any objection--
Oh, by the way, and that I chair the committee of hold as the Oversight Chair, but more than likely, I'll be on the floor, but, yeah, so that it-- Thank you for the offer.
I'll be--
Yeah.
Yes.
Why not, right?
Yes. On that motion, if there's no objection, motion carries. We're going to go ahead and take a recess till 1:00 o'clock, as we make time for the necessary agencies to come in and speak on the concerns of Bill 32-33COR.